Welcome, everyone. I am Tamara Blake Wallace, Planning Commission Administrator. Welcome to the September 20th, 2023 Planning Commission Regular Meeting. This meeting will be conducted as a hybrid meeting, allowing for both virtual and in-person participation. Serving as moderator tonight is Christine Goldsmith, who will now go over the rules and etiquette for this meeting. Chris?
Good evening. My name is Chris Goldsmith, Planning and Zoning Development Review Coordinator, and I will be your Zoom moderator this evening. This meeting is being recorded on both video and audio for record-keeping purposes. For those of you attending virtually via Zoom, please keep yourself muted to ensure no interruptions to the evening. If you're asked to speak and you're attending with audio, only by telephone you can mute or unmute using the phone's mute button, or by pressing star six on the touchpad. If you're attending virtually with a computer or smart device, you can mute and unmute using the microphone/mute button on the Zoom toolbar, or by using keyboard shortcuts. You may press Alt+A on a Windows device, or Command+Shift+A on a Mac. When the floor is open for public comments or questions, those attending in person will be asked to speak first, and then those attending virtually. If speaking, please identify yourself for the record first and then speak. If attending by telephone and you wish to ask a question or make a comment, please press star nine on the touchpad to raise your hand, and you will be called upon in turn at the appropriate time. If you're attending virtually and wish to ask a question or make comment, raise your Zoom hand, and you'll be called upon. Please say your name every time you speak for the benefit of those calling in who cannot see you. Finally, please use the Zoom chat to indicate if there appears to be a technical difficulty, or you cannot hear the meeting audio, and we will work expeditiously to try to correct any issues. Please refrain from placing comments or questions in the Zoom chat, as not all in the audience at the public meeting can see those communications.
Thank you, Chris, and I will now turn the floor over to the Planning Commission Chairman to call the meeting to order.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us for the Calver County Planning Commission September 20th, 2023 Regular Meeting. My name is Maria Buehler, and we will begin with Item 1 on the Proposed Agenda Roll Call. Vice Chair Kernan?
Here.
Commissioner Gadway?
Here.
Commissioner Freeland?
Here.
Commissioner Tui?
Here.
Commissioner Dr. Haller?
Here.
Commissioner Williams?
Here.
We have a quorum. If you could all please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is actions on the proposed agenda.
Commissioners, any changes?
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the proposed agenda as amended. Second?
I have a motion by Commissioner Tui, seconded by Commissioner Kernan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next on the agenda is actions on the proposed summary of actions for the Item A, August 30th, 2023 Regular Meeting.
If there are no changes or additions, I move that we accept them.
Second?
I have a motion by Commissioner Kernan, seconded by Commissioner Tui. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next on the agenda, Item 5, Recognition of Persons Attending the Meeting. Tonight, from Planning and Zoning, we have Mary Beth Cook, Director; Carolyn Sunderland, Deputy Director of Planning. Attending virtually tonight, we have Judy Machel, Deputy Director of Zoning. We also have present tonight Rachel O'Shea, the zoning planner; Ron Marney, the Environmental Planning Regulator. We have Will Hager, Planner 3; and we have Becky Parkinson, our Planning Commission Clerk. From Public Works tonight, we have Tom Jones, Deputy Director of General Services. And serving as our legal counsel tonight, we have John Mattingly. Moving on, Item Number 6, Planning Commission Work Session, reference to the Calvert County zoning update, Item A, the zoning ordinance update.
Good evening.
I'm Will Hager, and to my left, I have Rachel O'Shea, and to my right, we have Ron Marney. And as was just stated, Ron Marney is our Environmental Planning Regulator, and he is really the subject matter expert on all the topics that we'll be addressing tonight. And before we get into the focus of tonight's work session, I just want to go over a brief timeline of where we are in the process and how we got here. So, to begin, we had a joint work session on April 19th, which gave an overview of the zoning ordinance and the purpose, strategies, and goals of this update. The draft zoning ordinance was made available to the public on May 10th. We had a joint work session June 21st, where the draft zoning districts and zoning map were introduced. The first public forum took place June 22nd, and the focus that night was the draft zoning districts and zoning map. And we had a second public forum, August 24th, and the focus that night was the critical area, marine and water-dependent facilities, and floodplain articles we'll be reviewing tonight. So, since the first public forum, planning and zoning staff have met with a number of representatives from several organizations, as well as individual citizens, to discuss the proposed changes to the zoning update, and will continue meeting with groups and individuals throughout this process when requested. And since close to the beginning of this process, we've been receiving written public comments via emails to the zoning ordinance update email address, and those comments were packaged and delivered to the Planning Commission prior to today's work session, with any personal information included in those emails redacted. Questions and comments from the public, both via email and from staff taking notes at the public forum, were also compiled and used to create an FAQ section on the zoning ordinance update website. The FAQ section will continue to be updated throughout this process, and if anyone in the public is listening and hasn't done so, you may want to take a look and see if there's any questions, to see if any questions that you might have have already been answered there. So, as previously stated, the focus of tonight's work session is going to be Draft Articles 22, 23, and 24, Critical Area, Marine and Water-Dependent Facilities, and Floodplain. And for this presentation, we're going to begin with the critical area. So, Calver County adopted the Local Critical Area Program in 1988 to implement the requirements of the 1984 Maryland State Critical Area Act. The critical area includes all land within 1,000 feet of the mean high-water line of tidal waters, or the landward edge of tidal waters. A statewide critical area commission was created to oversee the development and implementation of local critical area programs. And our environmental planning staff work closely with the Critical Area Commission when revising this article, as any substantive revisions require the approval of the state Critical Area Commission. The critical area protects natural resources by reducing runoff pollution and associated impacts, and there are requirements for vegetation and impervious lot coverage, and restrictions on development in identified habitat protection areas. The requirements for vegetation include that there must not be any net loss of forest within the critical area, and a minimum amount of vegetation cover is required, typically 15% for each lot or parcel. And before I move to the next slide, I just want to note here, we received some public comments that protections in the critical area aren't enough to protect the bay, that stormwater in Prince Frederick doesn't stay in Prince Frederick. So I just want to note that there are also regulations that protect streams, forests, and sensitive environmental features outside of the critical area, but those regulations are located in different articles, Draft Articles 20 and 21, Natural Resources and Forest Conservation. So, the critical area functions as an overlay district, and the critical area regulations, if more restrictive than the underlying zoning district, will supersede the regulations of the zoning district. And within the critical area, there are several different land classifications which have their own regulatory standards and criteria, the characteristics of which are dependent on the intent and purpose of the classification. The Intensely Developed Area, or IDA, are areas of 20 or more contiguous acres where a mix of land uses predominate. IDAs are areas of concentrated development where little natural habitat occurs. An example of an IDA location in the county is Solomon's Town Center. Solomon's Island and most of the land adjacent to Back Creek is located within the IDA. The Limited Development Area, or LDA, are areas characterized by low or moderate intensity development, but that also contain areas of natural plant and animal habitats. The LDA III is a subcategory of the LDA. It was created for large lot subdivisions that existed prior to the adoption of the critical area law. It has the same regulatory requirements as the LDA, with the exception that there is a minimum lot size requirement of three acres unless the lots are part of a clustered subdivision. The Resource Conservation Area, or RCA, is characterized by natural environments or areas where resource utilization activities are taking place. Resource utilization activities include agriculture, forestry, fisheries, and aquaculture. The land use regulations are the most restrictive in the RCA, including permitted residential density. The maximum residential density permitted in the RCA is one dwelling unit per 20 acres. And there are also special buffer management areas, sometimes called a modified buffer area. This is where it has been sufficiently demonstrated that the existing pattern of development prevents the critical area buffer from fulfilling its water quality and habitat functions, and where development in accordance with specific provisions can be permitted in the buffer without a variance. It's so small, you can barely see it on this slide, but there is a special buffer management area on this map, right at the tip of White Sands, in the immediate area around the existing restaurant and marina, as an example. Within the critical area, there are habitat protection areas, and probably the most significant is the critical area. Next slide? Sorry about that, thank you. So as I was saying, within the critical area, there are habitat protection areas, and probably the most significant is the critical area buffer. The size of the critical area buffer varies depending, in part, on whether it's located in the IDA, LDA, or RCA, but typically, the buffer is a minimum of 100 feet from tidal waters and expanded for contiguous sensitive environmental features like steep slopes and highly erodible soils. A critical area variance from the Board of Appeals is required for disturbance within the buffer. If the critical area variance criteria are met and a variance is granted, mitigation plantings are required for the disturbance, and the mitigation required, if a variance is granted, is at a rate of three square foot, three square feet of plantings for every one square foot of disturbance, what we would call three-to-one mitigation. So there are a few proposed changes to the critical area regulations in this draft, which, as I stated previously, were developed by environmental planning staff in consultation with the state Critical Area Commission. And for those who are listening who aren't aware, we have made available documents which compare the draft zoning ordinance articles with the current zoning ordinance, and which highlight proposed substantive changes. And that is available on the zoning ordinance update website, if you have not taken a look at that yet. But some of these proposed changes are found in Draft Section 22-6D3. This section would allow the department to not require a variance from the Board of Appeals for a number of activities in the critical area buffer, and instead process the request through an administrative variance process. The type of activities this would apply to include a new development or redevelopment activity associated with a water-dependent facility, slope stabilization activities, a septic system on a lot created before December 13th, 1988. These are projects that require expertise from engineering, the Soil Conservation District, and Planning and Zoning, rather than a Labor Board's approval. A variance from the Board of Appeals requires three-to-one mitigation. These projects would require two-to-one mitigation, or, in the case of septic systems, one-to-one mitigation if clearing is required. So these projects would be less expensive and the process less time-consuming for the property owner, and it also allows the department to respond more expeditiously to slides and other emergency-type situations. The draft also proposes to revise how the critical area buffer is expanded for contiguous steep slopes. Under the current zoning ordinance, in the case of contiguous slopes of 15% or greater, the buffer is expanded four feet for every 1% of slope, or to the top of the slope, whichever is greater. And there's a consensus that this methodology is both cumbersome and looks arbitrary when delineated on plans. In the draft zoning ordinance, this has been revised so that, in the case of continuous slopes of 15% or greater, the buffer is expanded to the top of the slope plus 50 feet. This is a less cumbersome methodology, which makes the permit process simpler and quicker for the applicant. The draft critical area article also includes regulations which protect the cliff areas, the cliff areas along the shoreline from development. These primarily include building setbacks from cliffs, which generally range from 100 feet to 300 feet, depending on the location and characteristics of existing development in the area. And a section that's new to the zoning ordinance and included in this draft addresses criteria and conditions for the development of solar energy generating systems in the critical area. This section comes directly from recent revisions to state critical area regulations, and it establishes permissions, criteria, and conditions for permitted major, minor, and accessory solar energy generating systems. It allows small residential accessory solar energy generating systems in the buffer, and the Department of Planning and Zoning may not authorize a major or minor solar energy generating system in a habitat protection area, with the exception if they are located over existing legally-developed lot coverage in a modified buffer area. So, the next article we're going to cover is Draft Article 23, Marine and Water-Dependent Facilities. Draft Article 23 includes location of established harbor lines and shorelines, permitted and prohibited waterfront uses and conditions, defines and regulates the usable waterway area, conditions for private piers, community piers, commercial piers, and marinas, conditions for water-dependent facilities and activities, public beaches, and other public water-oriented recreation, and criteria for shore erosion protection works. And there is a lot of overlap with the critical area in this article for obvious reasons, and the Maryland Department of the Environment has approval authority on projects like shore erosion protection works that occur in the waters of Maryland. One revision made to this article was adding an exception to the requirement that a private pier be located on a property as an accessory structure to a single-family dwelling. The exception allows for a private pier to be built on an undeveloped property if it is in contiguous ownership with a property that has a single-family dwelling but lacks a riparian right. And another example of revision in this section addressing non-water-dependent facilities that are associated with a water-dependent facility or activity, the revision strengthens the regulation by removing the statement insofar as possible from the beginning of the sentence, so that non-water-dependent facilities, like parking, are required to be located outside of the critical area buffer. And there were a number of relatively minor revisions made to this article, including some based off recent revisions made at the state level, many of which aren't necessarily policy changes, but revisions made for clarification purposes. And again, if anyone listening would like more details and specifics on those revisions and other revisions, we don't have time to cover in this presentation, please see the document which compares Draft Articles 22 through 24 with the current zoning ordinance, which is available on the zoning ordinance update website. Article 24 of the draft zoning ordinance contains the floodplain regulations. This is another article that isn't just county requirements, but these are regulations required by FEMA. Floodplain regulations include things like regulations to ensure proposed development does not increase flooding or create a dangerous situation during flooding, including on another individual's property. If a structure is involved, it must be constructed to minimize damage during flooding. And in the floodplain article, there are different regulatory standards depending on whether the location is considered a coastal or non-coastal floodplain, since the flooding that occurs in these areas has different characteristics. In Calver County, the vast majority of development located in the floodplain are the older waterfront communities like Brooms Island, Breezy Point, Coe Point, et cetera, that were developed decades prior to zoning. So, when government agencies use the term floodplain, what they're typically referring to is what's also known as the regulated floodplain. These are areas with at least a 1% annual chance of flooding and are subject to federal, state, and county regulations. It's also sometimes called the 100-year floodplain, or special flood hazard area. These all essentially mean the same thing. So, as an example, what we're looking at here is the regulated floodplain in Long Beach. And these map FEMA delineates special flood hazard areas and base flood elevations. These special flood hazard areas can more or less be categorized into A zones and V zones. You can see the V zones here delineated in orange, and the A zones shaded in red. The areas within the A zone are vulnerable to coastal or tidal flooding by high tides, hurricanes, tropical storms, or steady onshore winds. What differentiates a V zone from an A zone is that the V zone has an additional hazard associated with high-velocity wind and wave action. So, as you can see, hopefully, down at the bottom of the screen, the base flood elevation for the A zone in Long Beach is four feet above sea level, and within the V zone, it is a little higher at six feet above sea level. So, in Long Beach, there is a flooding risk within the V zone on lots and a few structures directly adjacent and exposed to the bay, and there's also a flooding risk within the A zone that encompasses portions of the lots on both sides of Long Beach Drive. And for structures that are partially located within a special flood hazard area, the floodplain requirements apply for the entirety of the structure. An important part of the National Flood Insurance Program is the Community Rating System, or CRS program. The CRS program is voluntary, is a voluntary incentive program that rewards participating communities by giving discounts to residents and businesses on their flood insurance premiums. Communities are rewarded credits for certain activities and enacted regulations, and are designated a class ranking which determines your premium reduction. Calver County is currently a Class 8, which allows for a 10% reduction in flood insurance premiums. And just as a PSA, the CRS discount is now applicable to anyone who gets an NFIP policy effective April of this year. Previously, the structure had to be located in a special flood hazard area. Previously, the structure had to be located in a special flood hazard area to receive the discount. That is no longer the case. So one of the most significant regulatory requirements in the floodplain is building elevation. Building elevation is a technique that involves raising a building above the base flood elevation so that water can flow under the building during a flood event. Freeboard is the additional amount of height above the base flood elevation at which a structure's lowest floor must be elevated to be in accordance with regulations. It's also known as the flood protection elevation. These two terms, freeboard and flood protection elevation, are sometimes used interchangeably. In Calver County, freeboard is two feet above base flood elevation under the current regulations. In the draft zoning ordinance update, it is proposed to be increased to four feet above the base flood elevation. The floodplain regulations also require electric and mechanical systems to be located above freeboard. And one of the proposed changes in the draft regulations includes requiring the surface of subdivision access roads in the floodplain to be at the flood protection elevation instead of the base flood elevation. According to FEMA, according to a FEMA Commission cost benefit comparison, incorporating freeboard into new building construction can range from a quarter of a percent to one and a half percent of the total construction cost for each foot of freeboard. However, the property owner will pay a lower flood insurance premium and reduce the risk of sustaining flood damages in the long term. Sometimes you'll see property owners elevating even higher than freeboard. So areas within the floodplain are also located within the critical area commonly. And within the critical area, there are impervious surface lot coverage restrictions. So if you elevate high enough to fit your vehicle underneath the house, you don't need a garage, you create less impervious surface, and so that's also an advantage to the property Floodplain regulations like meeting the flood protection elevation are required for new buildings and structures, and they're also required for when an existing structure undergoes a substantial improvement. Under the revision, another revision proposed in the draft zoning ordinance update is in the definition of substantial improvement that you see here in the red text. What this does is more clearly define the scope and time period for when the substantial improvement requirements would kick in. The proposed new definition of substantial improvement in the draft makes it clear that a substantial improvement is any combination of repairs, reconstruction, rehabilitation, addition, or any other improvement of a structure taking place over a ten-year period, the cumulative cost of which equals or exceeds fifty percent of the market value of the structure before the start of construction of the improvement. So in summary, article twenty-two, critical area revised how the expanded critical area buffer for steep slopes is delineated. Some disturbances of the critical area buffer proposed to require administrative variance approval instead of having to go through the Board of Appeals variance process. Article twenty-three revised to clarify that private piers are allowed on undeveloped properties with a riparian right that are contiguous with the property lacking a riparian right that has a dwelling. Article twenty-four revised definition of substantial improvement and the flood protection elevation raised from two feet to four feet. So I think at this time, staff requests that the planning commission discuss draft articles twenty-two through twenty-four and direct staff regarding any recommended changes to the draft articles.
Couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Under the article twenty-four regarding floodplain, you mentioned raising road elevations. Is that not going to create additional flooding issues depending on the type of flood, be it saltwater intrusion or stormwater, rainwater?
It's going to come down to the design of the project, which would have to be addressed at that time. Anytime you're doing any type of major subdivision or anything along those lines, FEMA, along with all our policies that have to match up with that, have a no adverse impact policy. So in other words, when you do something, you can't dump the water on your neighbor's property.
And in regard to the article twenty-two, critical area, most of your comments centered around the hundred-foot buffer, correct? Not the thousand-foot buffer.
I think you're confusing the critical area generally with the critical area buffer, but if you want to.
So explain to us the difference between the thousand-foot and the hundred-foot.
So the thousand-foot is what actually delineates where the critical area law applies. So everything within a thousand-foot of tidal waters is within the critical area itself. Now, the critical area is made up of multiple overlays. It's not simply just the IDA, LDA, and RCA that we discussed earlier. It also has what's referred to as the critical area buffer, and this is what a defined, Comar defined habitat protection area, which is typically everything within a hundred-foot of mean high water. This area is a non-disturbance area for basically preserving the riparian ecosystem and filtering water before it reaches tidal waters.
So with documented sea level rise, it's possible for the mean high watermark to gradually come closer?
Absolutely. It can move.
So any permits requested would be based on the mean high water at the time of the development, is that right?
That's correct. I actually had an application in not too long ago where we were looking at a prior permit where it was not in the buffer, and they were trying to do an addition, and that addition will now be in the buffer due to erosion and sea level rise. So that absolutely can move, and it would be addressed at time of permit application.
Thank you. How often and how is that mean high tide measured and adjusted?
So as far as the overall critical area, that one thousand feet, that's typically done at the state level. We would not make a major substantive change to the critical area maps without prompting from the state. As far as that critical area buffer line, that's basically done at permit application because it's not, you know, a mapped feature. We basically look at your individual property at each application. We go, okay, where are you at? Where are you working? And does this come into play? Because again, that critical area buffer can also be expanded for other contiguous environmental features, so it's not simply a static buffer. It's, for lack of a better word, it's organic and it's going to move with the landscape.
The state does take a look at the critical area line and the mean high water line, and they do review that and redo the maps on occasion. So it's not done often, but they do look at that and adjust the boundaries. And then they send it to the counties, and then the counties adjust their mapping.
And so as that adjusts, our four feet adjust with?
It would adjust with the boundary, yeah, as amended.
Thank you.
For those that may not know, what is the definition of riparian rights?
So riparian rights refers to a property that has waterfrontage and its ability to utilize said waterfrontage. So say you have a property with a hundred wide foot access to the Patuxent River that has a riparian right and by law was able to utilize it by enjoyment of a pier and access to said pier. That's why one of the few exceptions where you never need a variance within the critical area buffer is a four-foot wide pedestrian access because again, it would be illegal to deny that legal use of their land.
Great explanation. Thank you. On page eighteen of the slide, substantial improvement, you're adding taking place over a ten-year period in the cumulative cost, and you're denoting that in reference to percentage of the market value of the structure. I'm assuming that's market value of the structure, not the property, part one. Part two, who and how would you possibly track over a ten-year period?
I'm glad you asked. So first off, we will, to get to the value, correct, it is always the value of the structure itself, not the structure and the land. We default to the ESTAT value because it shows your improvements value, but we will also absolutely accept a praiser's valuation of the structure as long as it distinguishes between the structure and the land. Now, as far as getting the improvements over a ten-year period, whenever I receive a permit application or any type of application where this would come into play, I'm reviewing our permit records, and I will enumerate all the expenditures that occur and the values of them within my review. So say you're doing an addition, and you've done five permits before then, I will list each permit, the scope of work, and the value that was listed with that permit application, and I will add that up and compare it to the ESTAT value in place at that time of application for the new application.
And on the value of the application, is that something that the applicant puts in there?
Yes, they have to provide a detailed breakdown that includes cost, labor, design, removal of any debris. Those are basically the FEMA criteria so that we have to have a certain level of detail. So whenever I get an application, if it's not already included, a comment that someone will always see is I'll bounce it back as a resubmit a request and say, look, I need this, it needs this level of detail. And that's typically provided by the contractor because it's very in line with the cost estimates that anyone would typically receive.
And I can see how you could do that when a contractor does the work, but if the homeowner himself is doing the work, then the value of the cost of the work is not the value of the work. Does that make sense?
It does, and there's absolutely mechanisms in place for that. You still have to value your work. You'd say, I believe it's going to take X amount of time, it has to be reasonable. And you would basically say, I'm going to work X number of hours, it's going to be, like I'm saying, me and my son, and you could put it at as low as the current minimum wage for the state of Maryland. And for materials, you can say, I'm getting this stuff from Home Depot, and we'll absolutely accept that, and that'll be perfectly fine.
Okay. I appreciate it. In reference to all the comments, the public comments that came in, there were some fascinating questions and comments in there. I really had some good quality reading going over them, and I want to thank all the people that sent those comments and questions in because it made me think about a lot of new stuff as well. Out of curiosity, I know it's public comments section, but there was a lot of questions to you. And I don't know, in the public comments, do you answer those emails with those questions?
Yeah, there's specific questions that look like they're not rhetorical.
Right.
Yeah, we do respond to those. We didn't include our responses to those in the package, but yes, we do reach out and respond to direct questions. And like I mentioned previously, we put together an FAQ section on the website where we figured, you know, these questions that are coming in are probably not going to be, you know, there are probably more people with questions like these out there. And so we created that FAQ section in part based off of some of the questions that we were hearing that were coming in via email and also some of what we were hearing at the public forum.
I noticed in your presentation this evening, you alluded to some of those questions, actually, so appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's important to address certain things, yes.
And I know that this doesn't have to do with the critical areas and this and that, but I do want to throw the question out. I'm not expecting an answer at this point, but throwing the question out there. Someone asked in reference to the industrial park on two thirty-one being allowed to have or being upzoned or whatever you want to call it, to be able to allow to have drive-through restaurants, taverns, nightclubs, bars, home improvement centers, shopping centers, and adult entertainment enterprises. I'm going to throw the question out there simply because the document got put in with, it was part of the package on this. So at some point, I'd like, and I guess Mary Beth or whatever, I'd like some kind of, is that really in fact what's going to be allowed to be down there if this goes through? Don't need to answer it now because it's totally off topic.
We can certainly address that when we come back before you and discuss our uses article, article eighteen, which will go over a lot of the uses that will be permitted in the mixed-use industrial zone. I think that would be a good time to cover that.
I appreciate it. Thank you for letting me throw it out there.
Do we have any other questions, comments?
Well, if there are no other questions, and are there any?
I don't believe so.
Okay. I think in closing, we just wanted to mention that we've mentioned previously that our schedule is going to be fluid, that we're going to make revisions to it down the line, and we have made revisions to it. I checked the website today, I didn't see it updated yet, but it will be updated soon on the website. We've made some revisions to the schedule. And so the next open comment period and cycle in terms of public forums and work sessions, the articles to be in focus during that period are going to be articles, draft articles thirty, thirty-two, and thirty-three, which is zoning approvals, variances, and appeals, non-conformities, and enforcement. And what we're trying to do is just break down these sessions where we have comment periods and public forums and work sessions into more easily digestible chunks, and then slow the process down just a little bit and give it some room to breathe. And so, last slide, all of the information that you could possibly want or need hopefully is located here. You've got the zoning ordinance website, the zoning ordinance update website link, the email address where you can submit public comment, and then my email address and Rachel's email address as well.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great job on the work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, item seven, major subdivisions for final review and action. We do not have any items on the agenda tonight. Next would be item eight, applications for site plan review and action. And also, there are no items on the agenda tonight. Next, we have item nine, major subdivision applications for preliminary review and action. There are no items on the agenda tonight. Next would be item ten, long-range planning, and we have no items on the agenda tonight. Next would be item eleven, items for discussion and/or action. Item eleven A, property acquisition, two fifty-five JW Williams Road, Prince Frederick, Maryland.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
My name is Tom Jones. I'm Deputy Director for DPW of General Services. I'm here tonight to read you the memo titled Property Acquisition, two fifty-five JW Williams Road in Prince Frederick, Maryland. Background. The Board of County Commissioners directed Department of Public Works, General Services, to pursue the property located at two fifty-five JW Williams Road, Prince Frederick, Maryland. The property gives an opportunity for the county to provide improvement of public safety at the Barstow Convenience Center and provide Prince Frederick Waste Water Treatment Plant Number One with additional discharge area in Prince Frederick. Title three, three dash two oh five of the land use article of the Maryland Antinoted Code specifies that certain types of projects may not be authorized or constructed in local jurisdictions or in a geographic section of the local jurisdiction until the planning commission has approved the location, character, and extent of the development as consistent with the plan. Example, comprehensive plan or town center master plan. Types of projects include a publicly or privately owned street, square, park, or other public ways, ground, or open space, a public building or structure, or a public utility. Discussion. The subject properties, parcel zero zero three three, number one, on the tax map. The subject properties, Parcel 0033, Number 1, on the tax map 0024 totals approximately 113.24 acres, and Parcel 0336, Number 2, on tax map 0024 totals approximately 29.63 acres, both parcels totaling 142.87 acres. The property is Zoned EC for Employment Center and RCD for Royal Community District and is located within one-mile radius of the Prince Frederick Town Center. Conclusion and Recommendations. The Department of Public Works General Services recommends that the planning commission find the proposed acquisition at 255 JW Williams Road, Prince Frederick, Maryland, consistent with the adopted Calver County Comprehensive Plan, Chapter 10, Government and Community Facilities, Goal 1, Objective 3, 10.1.3.4.
Sir, that's a really great idea to do that.
Yes.
It'll help out a lot.
It will.
And not trying to eliminate any discussion, but I would like to go ahead and make a motion to find it consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan, Chapter 10, as you said.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Gadway, seconded by Commissioner Tui. Any further discussion?
I've got a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Tom, what's the purchase price of this property?
1.7 million.
And how many acres of the 142 are available for the sewage discharge?
That's going to be determined by water and sewer.
Has there been any geotechnical evaluation of the property?
Yes, sir.
But you don't know what the acreage is.
James, they didn't share that information with me.
Is it planned for spray irrigation or...
Spray irrigation, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor.
Have a second.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Next on the agenda, Item 12, Items of Interest. Item A, the Maryland Planning Commission Association Annual Conference. Just want to remind the planning commission that that will be taking place October 24 through the 26th, and that will be located in Kent, Iowa. Item 12B, we have on the agenda the site plan and subdivision application list. These are for informational purposes only. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer those. Hearing no questions, we'll move on to Item 13, Public Comments, and I will pass that on over to you first.
If you see no hands at this time, is there anyone online on Zoom that had comments? Please raise your Zoom hand if you do. Okay, with no hands raised, no public comment, we move on to Item 14, Adjournment.
Madam Chair, I move for adjournment.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Tui, seconded by Commissioner Kernan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you all for attending the meeting tonight, and enjoy the rest of your evening.